Good evening. The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education Public Work Session Meeting of April 8, 2021 was convened virtually and hosted in the Media Center of Anthony Wayne Middle School, 201 Garside Avenue, Wayne, New Jersey. The statement of compliance setting forth time, date, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and the roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Can I get a mover? Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Scher, please rise for a flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Would you like to do another roll call, Mr. Moffett?
Call roll. Mrs. Albanese?
Yeah.
Mr. Bubba?
Here.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Kazan?
Here.
Mrs. Kumar?
Here.
Mr. Pavlak? Mrs. Putup?
Here.
And Mrs. Shear?
Here.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, tonight, filling in for Dr. Toback, who's away at a conference, we have Assistant Superintendent Donna Reichman, and she'll kick us off this evening. Mrs. Reichman?
Good evening, everyone. As Ms. Kazan shared, Dr. Toback's unable to be with us this evening. I'm happy to be here tonight in his place. At our last meeting, we shared a presentation to detail our Phase 5 plan, which begins on April 19. This presentation is posted on our website for parents and guardians to view and review. As we shared at our last meeting, prior to the spring break, we're very excited to provide more in-person time at school for pre-K through 12 students. We know that many of you are also very eager to have your children attend more regularly. A decision was deliberately made to begin what we plan to be the final phase of our reopening plan for the school year, two weeks after the spring break week. This decision was made with the consideration that many families would be participating in gatherings to celebrate the holidays and the possibility that, for various reasons, many might need to quarantine. This period also offered us the necessary time to receive our orders for our additional distancing materials and PPE and prepare the buildings to offer the safest environment possible for all of our staff and students. We continue to develop and implement our plans to address the enormous social and emotional challenges and any unfinished learning faced by our students, families, teachers, and staff over the past year. This summer, we plan to offer high-quality extra-help programs to address unfinished learning and focus on intervention and acceleration. On today's agenda, you'll see that we have an additional 17 substitute teachers to give us a total of approximately 68 since the increase in the substitute rate in February. We are so grateful for the many community members who have signed up to be a district substitute during a time when we are in great need of the additional staff to keep our schools open and running smoothly. Many of our staff have also been able to get vaccinated, and we're thankful for the opportunity to work with the township to provide vaccination appointments for any of our staff who are in need of them. This week, Governor Murphy announced that those who are fully vaccinated no longer need to quarantine or get tested after domestic travel. This week is National Assistant Principals Week. We're so grateful for the enormous contribution of our Wayne Schools Assistant Principals that they make each and every day to help our students. This year, our celebration takes on an even greater significance as we recognize that all our assistant principals have done so much and what they've conquered to help us through the pandemic. Their roles have evolved and expanded to include many new responsibilities. We're so proud of each of them and appreciate their leadership and unwavering commitment to our schools. This week, we also celebrate National Library Week. The theme for National Library Week, "Welcome to Your Library," promotes the idea that libraries extend far beyond the four walls of a building and that everyone is welcome to use their services. This idea takes on a whole new meaning this year, and we have seen firsthand how our media services extended far beyond our schools. Digital access to books and resources was offered in a way that was relevant, engaging, and extended beyond the classroom. Virtual bookshelves have been created, and book selections have been identified that highlight and celebrate diversity and underrepresented populations. We are so grateful for our superior library media specialists and their commitment to our students and schools. In honor of School Library Week, I'm sorry, in honor of School Library Recognition Month, I have a resolution to read on behalf of the district. Going to read the Approval of Proclamation for School Library Month. Resolved that the Wayne Board of Education recognizes April 2021 as School Library Month, whereas the school library is to ensure that students and staff are effective users of ideas and information, and whereas the school librarian's role is to provide the leadership and expertise necessary to ensure that the school library is an integral part of the instructional programs of the school, and whereas the Wayne Board of Education has entrusted the school librarian in each school to teach the skills of locating and using information through traditional resources and new technologies, to provide literature appreciation activities, and to guide and encourage content and recreational reading to every student. And whereas lifelong learning begins and is systematically developed through the school library curriculum of the elementary and secondary schools, and whereas the school library contributes to the individual growth and development of all students while fostering both excellence and equity in education, and whereas the school librarians of Wayne Township Public Schools have dedicated themselves to work for quality school libraries for all students, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of the Wayne Township Public Schools does hereby proclaim April 2021 as School Library Month in all of the public schools, and calls upon school administrators, teachers, students, and citizens of Wayne to recognize and support this action and to participate throughout the month of April in the celebration of School Library Month. For my HIBA report, I'm reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents in the Wayne Township Public School. There were eight incidents investigated since the last report, and six of those cases were deemed to be in the category of HIB. This concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Reichman. Mr. Moffett, revisions to the agenda?
Yes, this is a public work section, and the changes are on the second page under emergent. Under emergent T, Human Resources, Items 1 through 17. T1, Approval of Leave Request, Change Number 1, Position from Phys Ed to Physics Teacher. T4, Approval of Revised Items, under number 5, ID number 5411, Revised to Read, February 16, 2021 through March 24, 2021, 6 days. 3/25, 2021 through April 6, 2021, Family Illness Personal, April 7, 2021 through March, I'm sorry, May 14, 2021, FMLA. Under number 8, Add Rachel Howrauer, is H-O-F-B-A-U-E-R, Revised End Date to LTR, Grade 1, RC, from April 30, 2021 to June 30, 2021, No Change in Salary with Benefits. T6, Approval of Permanent Subs, Remove Number 1, Caroline Capizo, Add Nancy Cohen, which is permanent sub, APT, FTE1, and that's 99-11-50/ELN, and that is account line 11-120-101-000-000, $225 per day, effective April 12, 2021. T9, Approval of District Staff, Revised Number 4 to Read, April 14, 2021 through May 7, 2021, Salary 60,930, Prorated, Step 1, MA+15. That is May 10 through, May 10, 2021, through October 1, 2021, Salary 39,605, Prorated, at 65% of Step 1, MA+15. Add Number 5, Caroline Capizano, LTR, Phys Ed, LAF, FTE1, and the UPC number is 01-10-25/EP, and that's account line 11-120-100-101-07-000, Effective April 9, 2021 through May 7, 2021, at 64,630, Prorated, Step 1, MA+30, Effective May 10, 2021, June 30, 2021, and that's at a rate of $42,000, $10,000 prorated, 65%, Step 1, MA+30, Replacing ID number 8704. Add Number 7, again, this is under T9, Michelle, and I'll spell her last name, ABLASCHI, LTR, Grade 2, APT, FTEs 1, UPC number 01-11-50/AEX, and that's account line 11-120-100-101-11-000, Effective April 9, 2021 through May 7, 2021, at 53,830, Prorated, which is Step 1 BA, Effective May 10, 2021 through June 30, 2021, at 34,990, Prorated, which is 65% of Step 1 BA, Replacing ID number 6708. Under T14, which is Approval of Resignations and Retirements, Add Number 2, which is Sarah, I'll spell her last name, K-I-S-H-B-A-U-G-H, which is Part-Time Paraprofessional, R-Y, UPC number 14-10-12/ECH, Account Line Number 11-212-100-106-17-008, at $17.58 per hour, Step 3, Effective March 26, 2021. Add Number 3 is Michelle, and I'll spell her last name, ABLASCHI, Permanent Sub, APT, UPC number 99-11-50/ELM, Account Line 11-130-100-101-03-000, That's at a rate of $225 per day, Effective April 9, 2020, Appointed to LTR Position. We're adding a new item, which was T16, Approval to Rescind Items, and it reads, "Resolveth the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, approves the following item to be rescinded for the 2021 school year." This line is one line long, it's Angela, I'll spell her last name, C-O-L-O-N-T-O-N-I-O, Permit Substitute, APT, at $225 per day. We are adding T17 to the group, and that is Return from Administrative Leave, and that reads, "Resolveth the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, provides the following to return from administrative leave for the 2021 school year." That's number 1 is ID number 8704, Effective April 9, 2021, and number 2 is ID 6708, Effective April 9, 2021. Moving on to Emergent School Resource Legal, we are adding one tonight as X1, which is Approval of Student Contract, and that reads, "Resolveth the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of Superintendent, hereby approves a student contract with respect to student ID number 7064507614, as attached by reference, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the agreement to further implement same." And that concludes the revisions to tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. Okay. It brings us to our first public portion. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employer or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Can I get a mover? Mr. Giordano, Mr. Pavlak? Okay.
Madam President, seeing no hands raised, I move to close.
Mr. Pavlak, Mr. Giordano seconds that motion. Okay, we have a quiet group tonight. Very well, on to our committee reports. Several committees met this evening. Would like to go first. Mrs. Kumar.
The Education Committee met tonight, April 8. Board members in attendance were myself, Lynn Albanese, and Matt Giordano, with Donna Reichman also in attendance as our administrator. We discussed the February 11th committee minutes, and we reviewed our current agenda items. We went over what the status of high school assessments. We're happy to be able to offer the AP Chinese Language Exam next year, and we're looking at an update to our district goal on diversity and, as was stated during our recognition of our media specialists, we have a new website with a library dedicated to cultural diversity. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Kumar. Mrs. Scher?
This evening, the tech and safety and security meeting was held. It was myself, Mr. Bubba, and Dr. Burchard. We discussed network security. We discussed network upgrades that our internet contract expires this year, but we have an E-rate of 30% off, so we're going to upgrade from 2G to 10G internet bandwidth. And we also discussed working on outdoor Wi-Fi areas for the tents that are being put in a lot of the schools. The middle school has already been done, and the high schools are being worked on next week. And we just discussed an app for the new phone systems that were put in, and that was it.
Wow, good news. Mrs. Putup?
The Finance Committee met this evening. Myself, Mr. Pavlak, and Mrs. Kazan, along with our administrators, Mr. Moffett, and Ms. Lightet. The business that was discussed included review of agenda items that we'll be going over this evening, financial reports for February, contracts for 2020 to 2021, also contracts for 2021 to 2022, information on tuition students, and Chapter 44 relief. We reviewed the budget transfer process. We looked at our grant updates for CARES, FEMA, and ESER. We went through 2020 to 2021 budget updates, revenue and appropriations, enterprise programs, and fiscal year transfers. We went through the 2021-2022 budget discussion and updates, and then we also discussed requests for proposals for business services, special services, and health benefits. Thank you.
Mrs. Putup, were you going to give a CPAG report?
Yes, I didn't know if you wanted me to do that now. I will.
That would be a good time, thank you.
Thank you. Last night was a meeting of the CPAG Committee, Special Education Parent Advisory Group. This year, Student Support Services updated the department's website to incorporate new functionalities and also to reflect recent milestone accomplishments. The assistance of our terrific technology department was instrumental to a successful launch. Some examples included calendar of events, parent resources, and recorded webinars. Student Support Services was very fortunate to partner with the Wayne Education Foundation and Wayne Special Parents Association this year. The Educational Foundation sponsored a district-wide paraprofessional training in the fall presented by Handle with Care. The Wayne Special Parents Association sponsored five workshops presented by district staff. Additionally, the ARC and Planning for Adult Life provided a series of parent workshops to provide transition information on the topics of accessing services and natural community support. Unified and Stars Clubs continue to expand this school year, specifically including some elementary students that work together with preschool students attending our Early Childhood Center. Another example of a unified Stars Elementary Program is the collection and donation of food and blankets to Eva's Kitchen. Unified Track is expected to get off the ground this spring. Student Support Services is excited to participate in a virtual resource fair sponsored by the Workforce Development Board of Passaic County. This event aims to help individuals with disabilities navigate resources during a pandemic. The date of the virtual resource fair is Wednesday, April 21, from 2:30 to 3:30 p.m. More information will follow, please check the Support Services, Special Services website. Student Support Services will be running a summer academy for students currently in grades 1 through 8 who attended at least one out-of-class resource class during the 2020-2021 school year. Additionally, our extended school year, ESY, registration information was shared with families who have a student attending a self-contained program and have it listed in their individualized education plan. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank the President of CPAG, Mrs. Swalen, who will be stepping down in her role and who has done a wonderful job with this organization over the last couple of years. Thank you, Mrs. Swalen.
Great report. Lot of good things going on for our special education students. Okay. On to the agenda.
Madam President?
Mr. Pavlak?
I would move the entire agenda as one item.
I second. I'm sorry, was that you, Mr. Bubba?
Yes, I seconded it.
Okay, that's a second by Mr. Bubba. Discussion. Does anyone have any comments or questions about any of the agenda items? Okay, very well. Roll call, Mr. Moffett?
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mrs. Putup? Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kazan?
Yes. Okay. Our second public portion. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to start their state, their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Over. Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Kumar. Okay, I see a hand.
Good evening. My name is Donna Reaver. I'm the First Vice President of the WEA. As I'm sure you're all aware by now, New Jersey was recently named the number one in schools in America, again, and that is because of the truly fabulous educators who were thrown the curveball of their career this year. Wayne is no exception. Take the debates and the politics out. What did we hear week after week at these board meetings? Parents said that their children's teachers were doing amazing. The challenges we all faced were nothing to scoff at. They were real, they were personal, and we overcame them. The Wayne Education Association, your educators, have also done incredible things to help our community during these trying times. Through two different grants offered by the NJEA, we were able to make a sizable donation to the PTO Council's Food Bank for the holidays, as well as donations to both high schools for their project graduations. We also held an online community forum for parents through the State-County Circle of Care. Through them, we were also able to make a contribution that directly helped a family in need in Wayne. But we felt that we needed to do more, so with the help of our amazing school nurses, we were able to donate over $8,000 to Wayne Helping Hands to ensure that our most struggling families could put food on their tables. Our nurses not only helped us organize this, but they also donated their own time over spring break to help administer the COVID-19 vaccine at our Wayne site. These grants have also allowed us to donate cinch bags to our middle school students and Wayne Hills and Wayne Valley shirts to our high school seniors. We've sponsored teams at both the Wayne Boys and Girls Club and the PAL. Currently, the WEA is making book donations to each of the school's libraries with the help of our media specialists. Our incoming kindergarten students will be receiving a car magnet to show off that they will be attending Wayne Public Schools and graduating in the year 2034. In the future, the Auto Shop program will be holding an outdoor car fair that we will also be sponsoring. The WEA is also partnering with Mayor Vergano to hold a drug forum this spring. We are proud New Jersey educators. We are proud Wayne educators, and while we will continue to ensure that our members are safe and well, we will continue to do what we can to help our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no other hands. Can I get a mover? Mr. Pavlak?
Second.
Mrs. Shear? Okay, quiet night. Any Old Business? New Business? Mrs. Putup?
I just wanted to make a comment in relation to National Library Month. The celebration of libraries is very near and dear to my heart, but libraries wouldn't be anything without librarians. And we've now become media specialists. Libraries are not confined to books that are put in order on shelves. We help students with all types of resources, teach them online skills from the basics of typing to how to determine if a website has good information on it. And so I would also like to thank our media specialists in relation to celebrating libraries. Thank you.
Anyone else? Like to make a comment? Okay, well, I guess I'll take us out. I want to also thank our media specialists and congratulate them on their hard work and tell you that that was always my son's favorite room in the building, big bookworm. I also would like to thank our assistant principals and for their recognition this month. They do a huge job. I mean, just their daily classroom coverage situation is unbelievable. They really keep the schools running in a very challenging year, so this is a year especially that they deserve the recognition. And I'm happy to say that we're on track in spite of spring break and the fears and the worries. Our staffing is holding. We're not seeing any looming shutdown at this time, and we should be rolling out our Phase 5 plan on 4/19 as promised. So, thank you, everyone. Have a good night. Can I get a mover to close? Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Kumar? Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.